So I'm Ed Bros, the manager over at Franklin PUD. And this is a short, little brief introduction to I-937. It's a joint effort from Jim and I. He's been a general manager a lot longer than I have, so I got the short straw to do this. But if there are any questions, we'll kind of tag-team that part of it. So this background, the two bills that we're going to talk about today are aimed strictly at the amount of renewables and conservation that we're acquiring. The initiative is a fairly complicated law, but the two primary parts of it, renewable energy requirements. We have a mandate that by these dates to acquire a certain portion of our load either through renewable resources or equivalent renewable energy credits. On top of that, utilities must acquire all, and "all" is such a little word with big meaning here, but all cost-effective, feasible, and achievable conservation. Failure to acquire both the renewables and conservation leads to significant penalties of $50 a megawatt hour escalating over time. The initiative itself, you all remember, passed in 2006, just barely passed statewide with 51 percent of the vote. Eastside counties like us here, Benton and Franklin overwhelmingly voted against it, but it was primarily Seattle and one other county on the west side that put it over the top. The renewable energy standards is what we call this act, but 36 states have their own renewable standards. Lots and lots of differences in the various states. Washington, there's lots of discussion about whether hydro is renewable or not. Our initiative does recognize hydro as a renewable. It does not recognize it as an eligible renewable. And those targets that you saw on the first page, the 3%, 9%, 15% are all eligible renewables. So there's not a real easy definition of that. But eligible renewable, it needs to be an eligible renewable resource in order to count in these targets, okay? The existing federal hydro or the existing hydro projects that are owned by utilities does not count as an eligible renewable. Certain improvements to your hydro system will count. Solar will count, wind will count, but there's not a clear definition of what counts and what doesn't. One of the initiatives that we have going is to get some clarification with the state. And there's different boards that are set up for the publics now that we get advice on them. The commissioners really have a lot of say-so in what kind of renewables we build or not. Every different resource that you'll entertain buying, we need to do an assessment of whether or not it counts or not.
The wind power doesn't count.
My personal opinion of that, I think the initiative was written by the wind industry in particular. And the whole idea is to increase the amount of renewables in your resource portfolio to get cleaner, greener, that sort of thing. Anything to add to that?
Thank you.
So our hydro, again, that's a topic that gets lots of discussion here, but we are not dealing with that topic in these two bills. That's another argument that we can have for another day. So the intent of the initiative, increase the use of renewables, and I added the word "certain renewables" to get to your question, and promote conservation. Really two different aspects to it. There's lots of areas that we think this act could be improved. I should have probably said upfront is that while we're trying to amend this act, we're not trying to gut it, we're not trying to get rid of it. All of the utilities support the notions of conservation and renewables in our portfolio. What we're trying to do here, the bill for this in a public utility, the bill is paid by you all as customers, and we're trying to do it the most efficient, effective way possible. Some of those flaws that we talk about that are here, the definition of eligible renewables is fairly narrow here in Washington State. We can't get outside of the Pacific Northwest, the Western Energy Coordinating Council area. Something that counts for a utility that owns its hydro doesn't count for me as a purchaser of purchasing that hydro. But very narrow definition of eligible renewables. Lack of consideration of load growth and meeting targets, that's really the topic of what we're talking about in these two bills. There is some language in the act that talks about low growth. It doesn't go far enough as far as we're concerned. It still requires utilities to buy power that they don't need, and that's basically the bottom line. The initiative was passed in 2006 when we had a completely different economic environment. And since that time, you all know what has happened. And it's compounding the effect on ratepayers and buying stuff we don't need. And then conservation. These acts really incentivize and prioritize conservation. Conservation is the least-cost resource, probably the least impact on the environment, and we want to incentivize and prioritize conservation, and we believe these two laws do that. I'm going to let -- all those lines weren't supposed to come up. I probably touched this.
Okay. So Ed's done a great job of giving an overview of how we got to where we are right now. Benton PUD, and my name is Jim Sanders, I'm the general manager of Benton. We have about 45,000 customers, so we have been I-937 eligible since the outset. And what you see here is a depiction of what our concern is and what we're trying to do. The line across here, the dark brown with the square rectangle marks, is our, Benton PUD's allocation of the federal-based system, that is, the power that we buy from Bonneville. And that's comprised of the hydroelectric system, Clemente Generating Station, and a few other purchases that Bonneville makes. So it's about 205 average megawatts. As an I-937 eligible utility, we have purchased renewables equivalent to about 3 percent of our load. So all of our resources now account, average up to about 211, 212 average megawatts. So those are the resources currently under contract with, by Benton PUD. So that's the amount of resource we have to serve our load. So what is our load? And there's two lines here. The first is the blue with the triangles in it. That is a projection of our load growth without conservation. Ed mentioned that I-937 incents conservation to a point. We believe it can do better, and the bill that we're suggesting as modifications to the Energy Independence Act will do that. So...
Jim, another question. Bob, would you use your microphone? Yes, I'm sorry. On the previous slide, I had just made a couple notes to myself. Can you get back? Yes. The last two bullets, I think I understand the utilities have to purchase the unneeded power, and I think Ed was trying to address that and did a pretty good job of that with the emphasis on, we're mandated to do this, am I right?
Yes.
Okay. Can you maybe clarify the last bullet there? How are we disincentivized? I don't understand that.
Okay. Let me go back to this chart. So the blue line is our load growth without conservation. The green line is our load growth with conservation. And you can see that our load growth doesn't touch our total available resources through 2020. It's probably out to 2025 to 2028. So the requirement of the 9 percent in 2015 and the 15 percent in 2019, 2020 is for renewables that we don't need. So by lowering this line even more, that is, doing more conservation, we can extend the period of time that our existing resources will meet and cover the loads that we have currently projected. I-937 requires that every two years, we do a 10-year conservation plan and develop. So we look at the plan, and we figure out how much conservation we'll do over a 10-year period. Then we back up and say, oh, for a two-year period, we have to do a prorata share, so about 20 percent of that 10-year projection every two years. If we do more in that two-year period, it doesn't carry over to the next two-year period. So there may be conservation that we can do in that initial two-year period that would count and would actually help lower this, but because we'll have a new target in the next biennium, we're disincentivized by doing the conservation today because it doesn't count for the target in the next two years. So we're incentivized to meet the target, not to exceed it. I don't know if that helps or not, but because there may be more that we could do early, gain a bigger bang for the buck, we don't get credit for that in the next two-year period. So that's the way that conservation is disincentivized. Plus, if we still have to meet this 9 percent target in 2015, regardless of the amount of -- it only marginally lowers the amount of renewables that we have to acquire. So there's a couple of ways that conservation is disincentivized. So this is a picture for Benton PUD. You can see that our load growth is projected over the next 10 years to be below our resource that we've already contracted for. And again, with additional conservation, we could extend this line out even further and limit the amount of money we have to pay for either renewables that we don't need or renewable energy credits. So I think that's an explanation, at least a picture, of why Benton PUD is interested in modifying this bill. So I think Ed's got, we've got a similar look for Franklin coming up.
Is because our load growth is as high as it is, we don't have the delayed impact of all of this that Benton does. You know, the bottom line is, is because our loads are growing so fast, and they've backed off a little bit here lately. So related to that, the impact to utilities, there is a 4 percent cost cap built into the statute that a lot of people think that that should be sufficient for us. Based on these loads that you saw, this 4 percent is a cap on the amount of money that you have to invest in these renewables that you don't need. So to the extent of Franklin's numbers, $3 million a year, which basically is equivalent to about a 6 percent rate increase to us. Whether you need load or not, this caps the amount of exposure that you have to that amount of money each year. In Benton's numbers, you'll see. Again, it helps, caps the damage, but you're still spending money on things you don't need. So what we're trying to protect against in these bills is to eliminate as much of that as we can, because 6 percent, 4.6 percent, is still a lot of money to ratepayers. These two bills, so we introduced these right at the end of the last session, and they will be on the docket this time around. But basically what they do, it gives the utilities an option to buy resources they don't need. It doesn't force utilities not to buy them. If you've got a utility that still wants to invest in this, they still have the option to do that. They also prioritize conservation again as the least-cost resource. And again, our intent is not to change the intent of the initiative because we still believe in environmentally friendly resources, but not to the extent of penalizing ratepayers.
So by that, Ed, to put it in the layman's terms, what these bills are trying to do is give the utilities the option to buy it when the growth gets to that point and not force them to buy it whether they need it or not?
It forces, it allows them not to buy if they don't need it. Any load growth that you have, you're going to buy renewables from.
Right. But it's based on the growth.
Based on the growth and based on the need.
And if you're in a position where you're forced to do it, obviously the cost is going to get passed on to the ratepayer immediately.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Ed, can I just ask one clarification here? So if this doesn't change, we still have to buy the renewables, we're probably going to have to buy either more resources than we need or we're not going to use some of the resources we already have? Is that what happened?
Right.
So we would not buy some of the hydro? We would not buy some of our base load, and we would have to buy the renewables at increased costs?
Yes, yes. Or you'd sell it into the market, try to recover some of those costs.
I just want to make it clear that if this doesn't change, this is going to cost the utilities a lot of money.
Yeah. And then, as time goes on, it's going to cost us more because the standards get larger as resources become more costly. The definition of what's cost-effective also gets higher, so the amount of conservation that you're going to do is conservation is going to get more costly as well. But again, it's still the cheapest resource we have, so it's what we want to do.
Ed, I have a question for you. When I look at this, I'm trying to see who benefits from the current I-937. I mean, who would be opposed to these changes? And I just have to ask, is what stakeholder in this, what group or industry or utility is benefiting from keeping it the status quo?
So I would say the people that ultimately benefit are the developers of the project. There is not a utility that would be disincentivized from this, I don't believe. You could have, one of the investor-owned utility is very active in wind development, and they've got a big investment already made. So depending on how we fix this, you know, they could have some stranded asset, okay? But right now, we're not looking to strand anybody's asset. What we're looking to do is stop further expansion for resources that we don't need. So I think the wind developers, the renewable developers are really the party, what do you think?
But why would any legislator be opposed to these changes?
You want the honest engine answer.
Well, I just want to know if there's something I hadn't considered.
So the honest engine answer is campaign contributions get funneled into a lot of the politicians.
All right. Then having said that, we'd like to move along with some of the speakers, and I have a list of everyone that I'm going to go through. First off, from Senator Mike Hewitt's office, Barrett Price.
Hi, I'm Barrett Price, and I work for State Senator Mike Hewitt. He represents the 16th district, and he couldn't be here today, but wanted to go on record supporting this bill. He was a co-sponsor last session on 5964, and I want to talk about, a bit about why he co-sponsored the measure, and I want to thank the utilities for having this discussion. I think it's really beneficial for public discourse and sort of underscores what we've been trying to do over there for several years regarding some of the provisions on I-937. I think that Ed and Jim did a pretty good job laying out the situation as is and talking about some of the negative aspects here, but I think the "why" is best captured in Section 1 of the measure, which I'm going to read from just here briefly. The first line is really great. I'm a big fan of this one. "The legislature finds that requiring utilities to purchase electricity that they do not need to serve their customers' loads places an unnecessary economic hardship on utility customers. The legislature also finds that energy conservation is the highest priority resource." And two, "It is the intent of the legislature to remove economic and regulatory penalties from and encourage the acquisition of energy conservation." I have a hard time disagreeing with either, with those intent lines there. Those are good goals. It's expensive and wasteful in practice as it is now, and fundamentally, this is about ratepayers, you know, and lowering costs for ratepayers. You know, when I-937 was written, it specifically excludes hydropower because we forget 2/3 of our electricity in this state. And we've worked over the years, lawmakers have worked over the years, to amend the law because of that. What that does is push our best, our cleanest, greenest source of energy as a state and as a region off the table and creates that gap that was illustrated by those graphs that you see there. Again, you know, over 60 percent of the voters in our region and as high as almost 70 percent in District 12, which was a very dam-centric district, oppose this bill. It's not something, it's a one-size-fits-all policy that doesn't really fit our utilities anymore. The measure had bipartisan support in the Senate and in the House last session. We had five Republicans and four Democrats on in the Senate. I forget how many sponsors they had in the House. But this is something I think, you know, personally, that we're going to be able to gain a little traction on, at least in the Senate. And I want to just be on record saying that Senator Hewitt's going to be working to do that, along with probably most of our local delegation. You know, this is policy that makes sense to a lot of folks here, which is why we're in this room today. And I want to encourage both utilities and others in the region to pass resolutions to help support us when we go back over there in Olympia. And that's going to help us make the case when we're in committees, when we're having public hearings, when we're on TVW, to sort of, you know, make sure that the public understands and other lawmakers who are not as challenged by this in their districts with their own utilities, that we can favorably amend this law and not do any significant harm or gut, you know, the intent of the actual bill of I-937. So I think we'll be working to advance that, and I want to say thanks.
Thank you, Barrett.
Thank you, sir. And lady and gentlemen, thank you for the opportunity to be in here. I want to turn and face you guys, and I want to say thank you very, very much for each and every one of you that are here. This room has a good attendance. I just wish it was absolutely positively packed, standing room only, because this is what changes things in Washington State, is when the citizens of Washington State get involved. And you're here, and you're involved, and I want to thank you for being here. I am Representative Brad Clifford from the 8th Legislative District. I am one of the sponsors of House Bill 2124, and to me, it is absolutely imperative that we get this legislation passed. Just like was previously stated, you know, multiple times, for the ratepayers to have to pay and purchase unneeded power or resources in these economic times that this community, this state, this nation are facing is irresponsible. We've got to get this changed. And when we say utilities, who are the utilities? Is it the people sitting here? Is it the power that goes through the lines? No, it's you and I, the ratepayers. It's the businesses that operate in the state and this region. It's the businesses that we want to move to this region because we have low-cost energy for them to operate and to function and to grow and to prosper, because that's what's going to turn our economy around. And so ladies and gentlemen, I thank you for being here. Help us, work with us to help get House Bill 2124 or the companion Senate bill passed. It's imperative for us in our economic times to get this done. It's a great idea. It's a win-win idea. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Representative.
Yeah, exactly. Good morning. My name's Carl Adrian. I'm president and CEO of the Tri-City Development Council. I think most of you know, and I think most people in the room know, but TRIDEC is the lead economic development organization for Benton Franklin counties. So in state jargon, we're the ADO, which is Associate Development Organization, and in DOE jargon, we're the CRO. Sorry. We're the CRO, Community Reuse Organization. TRIDEC has about 360 member firms, and we have contracts with the cities, the counties, and the ports to perform economic development services. Thank you, both Benton and Franklin PUDs are members, so I appreciate that. For the past two years, TRIDEC has been leading an initiative called the Mid-Columbia Energy Initiative. And it's a focused effort to try to grow our local economy, particularly in the energy sector. Not just energy production, but in research, demonstration of new technologies, manufacturing of products, and equipment used in the energy industry. The Tri-Cities is the energy hub of the state. Approximately 40 percent of the electric production in the state is within 100 miles of the Tri-Cities. Majority of the wind power is in that same radius. We're also unique because we have, and you've said it on the charts, a large amount of renewables, but also we have Columbia Generating Station. So that's important. So TRIDEC and the Mid-Columbia Energy Initiative support the idea of new renewables and more renewables. Excuse me, I'm having a hard time with my voice. But one of our chief concerns on the existing legislation is what you've brought up before, the mandate to purchase new power that's more expensive than the other power. And in a down economy like this, more and more utilities don't really need the power. So again, it's a hardship on those utilities. Higher energy costs impact existing businesses, they impact agriculture, they make it more difficult to expand our local economy. So House Bill 2124 and the companion Senate bill. House Bill 2124 and the companion Senate bill would remove a mandate to purchase unneeded power while not changing the original intent. And so we think that's important. And we think the PUD should work hard to try to pass that legislation. We all understand that it's not easy to pass legislation in Olympia. You know, from time to time, I've said economic development is a team sport. It's also, and so is getting legislation passed in Olympia. And I will say, sometimes I think that's not a sport, it's more like a circus, but it does. I plan to recommend to my board of directors to adopt a resolution supporting this legislation. And I would encourage other organizations to do so. And we'll work with you to try to see that we can't get that legislation passed. Broad-based political support, as Representative Clifford said, is very important to any kind of effort like this, so that's important. Finally, thank you, commissioners, for taking the initiative to have this public hearing. I think we really appreciate that. And I have to thank our legislators for sponsoring the bill, the local legislators and those other legislators that will support the bill as we go forward. So thank you very much. Again, I apologize for my voice, but thank you.
Thank you, Carl.
Good morning. Thank you all for allowing me to come today. My name is Judith Gidley. I'm the executive director of the Benton Franklin Community Action Committee, otherwise known in the area as the CAC, by our clients and agencies who refer clients to us for services. Again, I want to thank you for the opportunity to address all of you. And I also wanted to introduce Kathy Merrill-Holly from my department, Director for the Community Services, who actually oversees the energy assistance programs called LIHEAT. I'm going to cut to the chase and go to my end, just to make sure, because for those of you who know me, I can talk, and so I don't want to lose time in that. In total, CAC provides services to over 31,000 individuals each year by way of approximately 42 different types of funding sources, of which energy assistance and homeless prevention are major programs. In these hard economic times, it doesn't make sense to require utilities to buy power they don't need. We don't want to look like the other Washington during debt crisis. We should do the right thing for mitigating and avoiding unnecessary expenditures. Conservation helps our clients because it's the least-cost and most environmentally friendly of all of the resources. It's time to look at reasonable solutions for our low-income families as well as our seniors on fixed income. And appears these two bills are simply asking for what any prudent business or family would do. Benton Franklin Community Action Committee applauds our local utilities for supporting these two bills that will help put and keep food on the table that is needed. It will help keep the lights on and the heat on for families who can't pay for electricity now. Now for my soapbox. CAC uses a variety of funding to meet our mission. Our mission is to assist low-income families to improve their quality of life and help them them provide pathways out of poverty. One of those ways is by helping them with energy assistance. These households are served by all of the utility companies who service the area of Benton and Franklin Counties. The increase in households needing help continues to get bigger each year. Each year, the CAC receives funding known as LIHEAT, the Low-Income Home Energy Assistance Program. For 2010 to 2011, the CAC received one million, five hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars in direct services out of LIHEAT to provide energy assistance for low-income households. To date, CAC has served one thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine Franklin County and two thousand and thirty-three Benton County residents, for a total of three thousand, six hundred and twelve households. Those households contain twelve thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine individuals. To date, we've paid out one million, four hundred and ninety-one thousand and forty-seven dollars in energy subsidies to the local utility companies. There were six hundred and sixty-one individuals in those households that were sixty-plus years of age, and one thousand and thirty-eight who were disabled in those households. Our numbers are running pretty equal to last year, where we had the same amount of dollars. For 2011 and 2012, which starts just right around the corner, October first of this year, the Benton and Franklin area will see a reduction of fifty-two, fifty-six point eight percent of the dollars dispersed this year. The projected dollars for, are reminiscent of what we had in 2008. Twenty-eleven dollars will be reduced by forty-three point two percent. Will be going down to eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven versus that total of over one point five million this, this past year. This will be, in turn, drop the projected numbers by that same equal, thirty-two, forty-three point two percent, providing only two thousand and fifty-two households, leaving the other one thousand, five hundred and sixty households to speculate on how they will pay their energy bills. The big problem, the low-income households will have to ask themselves, do we pay the rent? Do we pay the energy bill? Do we buy food, or do we buy the needed medicines that we need? The answer either way is not a viable option. Either choice has its consequences. Electric rates hurt, and when rates go up, low-income families get hurt when their power is turned off because of inability to pay. And they and their families, and yes, the majority of the households have children, go without. They cannot afford a four to six percent increase. I'd like to tell you just a little short story of a client that we serve. Gwen was an elderly disabled grandmother, raising her three grandchildren. She needed repairs to her heating of her baseboard, but didn't have the funds. She had a pellet stove, but it didn't work either. Due to her health issues, Kathy, our Department Director, was authorized to make a home visit. We usually don't do that, but she couldn't get out, and took Cliff, our Energy Conservation Specialist, with her. They found the family were heating their home with a portable propane tank with a small heater attached. Cliff tested the home for carbon monoxide and found extremely high and unsafe numbers, and stated the family was lucky that someone had not died. I guess in my book, any number would be unsafe, as all lives are valuable. Anyway, Cliff removed the propane tank from the home, checked the baseboard heaters, they indeed did not work. He checked and cleaned the pellet stove, went out and purchased pellets for the household to use, and reestablish safe and sound heat to, to the home. Did I mention that this was January of this year? Kathy then completed the LIHEAT application and authorized assistance to repair the wall heaters and provided LIHEAT energy assistance. Cliff rechecked the house to be sure that everything was working appropriately and that they didn't bring that propane tank back in the house. CAC provides over a thousand, five hundred and forty-two households with homeless prevention, rapid rehousing, and shelter assistance. We dispersed approximately one point five million to local landlords for some form of rental assistance each year to prevent, prevent and reduce homelessness. In total, again, we have served over thirty-one thousand households. And again, I want to encourage you to back this and support it.
Thank you very much for your comments, Judith.
So thanks for the opportunity to talk after this. I'm going to go bend Representative Norm Dix's ear and try to support some things on the national level. Thanks for putting this on. I think it's extremely important. I work for Energy Northwest, so I'm one of those dreaded developers that build renewable projects and also represent public power. And Benton and Franklin PUD are members of Energy Northwest. We have twenty-eight members, most of all public power across the state, so we really represent their interests. And what I like about this forum here is that, I've been saying this for many, many years, whenever you talk about energy, you should also talk about, you know, environment and economy. All three things go together. Unfortunately, I think when we passed I-937 as a state, we talked a lot about the environment, but we failed to fully appreciate the impact it would have on the economy and maybe even the energy prices. So it's time to learn from that. And I really, I really applaud, even though I can't officially represent Energy Northwest, endorse legislation, you know, being a Benton City resident, a grandfather, you know, and stuff like that, I think it's really as smart what, what Ed and Jim are proposing here. It's just a good fix, it doesn't gut the, the initiative, but it really makes a good fix. Because local decisions are very important. You have a utility that represents your interests, it's a reliable service, an environmentally responsible service, a cost-effective service, it's something that you all care about and you talk to your Commissioners about. So this legislation will allow a chance to maybe provide some fixes to I-937 that still represent good environmental stewardship, good local decisions, good businesses, decisions. I'll remind you, Energy Northwest built its first solar project in the year two thousand, just to demonstrate, to learn a little bit about solar. We're building another one for one of our members down in Oregon, a five-megawatt project, but that was before I-937. Many of our members came to us before I-937 and said, many of their citizens are worrying about the environment, they're thinking about it. So that's how Nine Canyon Wind Project occurred. Before I-937, in the year two thousand and two, we built Phase One of the Nine Canyon Wind Project. Benton and Franklin PUD were members of that. They didn't necessarily need it for load, but they really wanted to understand, what does it take to operate and build? What are the costs of a, of a wind project? And we certainly learned those lessons on, on, on Nine Canyon. So what I like about this, this proposed legislation is that it's smart. With not any disrespect to our legislators, when you have legislators trying to define electrical energy policy for the local utilities, that's pretty dangerous. And so you really ought to leave that up to, to the experts, they ought to work in conjunction. We should have a goal of environmental stewardship as a state? We do. This is a great state, we ought to be proud of what we have with our hydro system, with our carbonless energy resources, with our commitment to renewables. But we also ought to be at a time, I really applaud the, the folks from CAC. People who pay Energy Northwest's salary to operate generating resources, they come through the utility. But every one of those dollars comes from the ratepayers. And every one of those ratepayers have to make a decision as to whether or not to, in some cases, buy a big screen TV or pay a, you know, or buy their electric bills, but in other cases, it's real decisions like food or medicine, and that, that is real. So we need to come up with a common sense fix. Now, I know what it costs to build a wind process, a project and operate it. I know what it costs to build an op, a solar, a nuclear project. We operate hydro facilities ourselves. So we're fortunate in this state, they have pretty low costs, but the prices are only going to go up. A new wind project is seven or eight cents a kilowatt hour. Current prices from Bonneville is about three cents for their hydro system. So we know there's going to be rate pressure, but let's, let's make sure the rate, and as our population grows, we're going to need more energy, but let's make sure we make smart choices. This bill will allow people to make smart choices. So with that, thank you for putting it on, and see you later.
Thank you very much, Jack.
This may be a little more personal of a statement than some you've heard. My name is Tom Mackey. I'm the General Manager for Agro Northwest. We're an irrigated farm here in Benton and Walla Walla Counties. As we look around the world for good farms, we look for certain things. Good soils, we look for good infrastructure, we look for a stable government, and we look for consistent water. And that's probably one of the most important. Well, eastern Washington is one of those places that's premier in the world as far as food-growing areas. The only problem is, Mother Nature doesn't supply much of the water. We're required to pull almost all of our water out of the Columbia Snake Rivers, Snake River Systems. That takes significant capital and lots and lots of electricity. Say thank you. From two thousand and eight to two thousand and eleven, we've seen a twenty-four percent increase in my costs per kilowatt hour for, for electricity. I'm greatly concerned that two thousand and twelve and thereafter will see continued increases as we look at some of these initiatives and some of the other sources of electricity that are out there. Put that in dollar perspective, my bill in nineteen, in two thousand and eight was a little over six point six million. Today, it's over eight and a half million. I'll jump to something that I was going to say later. How do I pass that cost forward in a world economy that depends on cheap food? A lot of the shortages, some of the famine, it's not shortages of supply. We can supply enough food, but there's a whole lot of places in this world that they can't afford to buy it. They talked about some of the choices people have to make. And some of them, because of jobs, because of employment, because of poverty, they're not able to get the good nourishment that they really need. On another thing that we have here in this county, we have an industrial site that we're trying to promote. It's interesting that future electrical rates and sources is less attractive in this area. And some of our, some of the people that we've contacted, when it came down to it, they would not cite here because of some of the unknowns going forward in electrical rates compared to some other places that are promoting them. Electricity today, the hydro, whatever, costs about thirty dollars per megawatt. I'm all for conservation. I believe in conservation. I'm doing all I can. But a hundred dollars per megawatt hour? Two hundred dollars per megawatt hour? Does that make sense? Yes, there may be jobs in that development, but when my rate goes up, I find places to cut. And a lot of that is in labor. I believe that whatever jobs are created through some of this development of some acceptable energy sources, we will lose more jobs, and this economy will be hurt by that. This economy is built on buying TVs, cars, other things. Me for one, as a person and as a supplier of food, if my food's more expensive, I'm not going to buy that new fifty-five inch TV. I support the bills that hopefully effectively change and modify I-937 so that it promotes this area, the state of Washington, and especially eastern Washington going forward. We need more jobs, and we need economic growth. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Good morning. And I would also like to thank the, both Franklin and Benton PUD Commissioners for having this joint meeting today and allowing members of the public and people like myself to come in and make comments on this, these bills that are being considered. Before I start and discuss that bill, I, I need to talk just philosophically for a moment, if you'll allow me to. It says that we at the Port of Pasco are joined at the hip by our river system, and we're joined at the hip by, by this river system with the irrigators such as Tom Mackey, the power producers such as Energy Northwest, the power consumers that are here in the audience, and our communities that benefit from this river to be as remarkable a resource as it is. So just from a philosophical statement, I need to tell you that if the statewide policy interest is in having a green portfolio of power production, it is perplexing, it is mind-boggling, and it is absolutely infuriating that the, the initiative that was passed takes no credit whatsoever for what is the absolute greenest resource known to mankind, that being the production of power by Agro Power. Today, today, we are generating more greenhouse gases discussing I-937 than this power production system has generated in its entire existence. And that's certainly nothing personal about any elected officials and their comments, but, so philosophically, I need to make that comment before and to preface anything I have to say. I, I would like to say that with respect to the, the issue before us today, that I, I recognize that power planning and power management are about balancing of many, many factors. Two factors that I think everyone across the state, and regardless of the perspective they might have, is that the, the demand for power and the cost of that power are two of those factors. There are many, many factors, environmental sustainability, social justice, and I recognize that those are very, very real, but clearly, demand and cost are two of those. The way the current law is written, and the way it was described by your executives today, it's, it's clear that as you approach this threshold, or this threshold criteria of being eligible to feel the impacts of I-937, not only are those two elements of demand and cost taken off the table, but you're mandated to ignore them. You buy power before you need, at the price that is not necessarily the best price that you can get it. And I think we as consumers, we at the port, and the customers that we represent, and the economic development interests that they represent, we believe that is incorrect. Incorrect. In recognition of that fact, the, your PUD, PUD staff provided and requested that the Port of Pasco Commission consider support of these two bills that are being discussed today. And I'm here to tell you that on the eleventh day of August, two thousand and eleven, via Resolution Number Thirteen-Eleven, the Port of Pasco Commissioners passed a resolution in support of those two bills. And we are there to provide whatever support going forward, to make sure that the, the discussions in the state legislature are successful to, to assure that as we move forward, that these two important factors are considered in power management and power planning. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Jim. We have a phone call scheduled now.
All right, I will begin. Thank you, and I'm sorry I cannot be there today, the, the one day that, the month that I really couldn't show up, and that was this day. really couldn't show up, and that was this day. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I'll just continue. I'm, I've been a state representative now, this is my second year, I just concluded, so I have one year left on this term, and I am on the Technology, Energy, and Communication Committee and also the Environmental Committee. So the timing is pretty good, I guess, or at least my decision being on both of these committees. And I-937, of course, was certainly a few years ago. I suppose I could have understood it a little better if it were passed somewhere they did not have renewable energy already, that in our state where we've got hydroelectric power and a large percentage of our electricity comes from our dams, it just did not make much sense, unfortunately, but it still passed. Now we're starting to see the adverse effects of it, especially this last spring where we had our high water runoffs plus high winds that actually put our hydro production into competition with the wind power, and that's not good. It caused a lot of adverse effects. And of course, a lot of people say, well, let's just sell that excess power to California, but that's not so easy because we don't really have the best transmission out of our area down to California. So I've always spoken out on this subject, and I've always felt that we need a stronger, better statewide energy plan, and I know people are working on it in Olympia. I'm not sure they're covering all the subjects the way they should and address the real issues as they should. So of course, with our economy not doing real well and less demand for electricity, we're running into a big problem here with more electricity than we need, at least at the time, at this time. So the worst part of this is the purpose of this bill that I sponsored is that we have this excess electricity and we're forcing utilities to charge customers for the renewable resources not being used. And so this bill was introduced right on one of the last two days of the legislative session in May, at the end of the 2011 session, and hoping it would create enough, I suppose, attention and publicity to get some traction, and it certainly seems to have been successful in doing that. The governor, and I'm saying because of this bill is passed, but, I mean, was introduced, but the governor has made it a top priority this year to address the issues of 937, which is very good. I think that's a real positive. And Dave Updegrove, who is the legislator from the West Side, who is the ranking member on the Environmental Committee, is taking this matter up in the Environmental Committee. And he and I have spoken a couple of times already about how to address this issue, which really is not going to be easy because there's a lot of different opinions in regards to how we proceed procedurally and how we go forward. But I'm certainly going to help push this bill as hard as I can to force something to happen. And so again, I am sorry I'm not there. I don't know if I can very easily answer any of your questions, but I'm happy to be on board and to help push this, I think, very important matter forward, and we'll see what happens during the legislative session this next year.
Thank you, Representative Neely. We'll let you get back to work and we'll continue on.
All right, I look forward to working with all of you. If you have any questions, feel free to contact my office.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and bye.
Marie Mosley, City of Kennewick.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here today and speak to you in support of House Bill 2124 and Senate Bill 5964. As the Benton County Commissioners are aware and the general manager for Benton PUD, we had a joint meeting about a month or two ago to talk about things that are of interest to both the PUD and the City of Kennewick, and at that time, we talked about some of the legislative priorities as well, and I just want to reconfirm and reaffirm that we are committed to work in partnership with Benton PUD. Just by way of background, and again, my name is Marie Mosley, I'm the city manager for the City of Kennewick, and by way of background, the Kennewick City Council has identified five strategic priority areas that they want staff to focus our efforts on in order to move the city and organization forward. And those five priority areas are economic development, quality of life, infrastructure and growth, community safety, and responsible government. All of those priority areas are significant and require the partnership of our community and Benton PUD in order to move those forward. However, there's two of those priority areas that I want to focus a little bit more effort on and are significantly impacted by the implementation of I-937 to our community. Economic development, which is the city's future, that will help us maintain our existing level of service without significantly increasing taxes to our citizens, and infrastructure and growth, which is required to maintain very good infrastructure that will allow for quality, level of service, and economic development efforts. All of our prior priority areas obviously require partnership, and the city can't do it alone, and we work with our community partners to move these forward. The city will continue to work with our community partners as well as Benton PUD, who is a significant partner to help us achieve these goals of economic development and infrastructure and growth. In order to continue to effectively service our expanding urban growth area as well as our existing customers, it is critical that Benton PUD is able to maintain effective rates in our community. And a few points that I want to make relating to moving forward as a community. First of all, a significant portion of our businesses in the City of Kennewick are considered small businesses. Electric rates have a significant impact on our businesses at a time when many of them are struggling to compete. The electric rates and infrastructure availability is critical to continued growth and economic development. The City of Kennewick pays approximately 1.8 million annually in electric charges. Every 1 percent in power rate increases impact the City of Kennewick very significantly. Those increases, the only way that they get paid at the City of Kennewick is to either increase taxes or fees to our citizens or to reduce existing level of services in one way or another. We continue to struggle to prioritize our services, to not have an impact on our community, but these type of increases have a significant impact as we move forward. The requirement of utilities to have 9 percent of their load for renewable resources in 2016 have a significant impact on the City of Kennewick, our citizens, our existing businesses, and potential new development and jobs in our community. Benton PUD and the City of Kennewick have partnered on conservation projects in the past and will continue to work on opportunities in the future, and I think that's what's very critical, is that we'll always look at ways to conserve energy and work with Benton PUD to do that. The recent partnership resulted in an annual savings of approximately 200,000 in electric costs to the City of Kennewick, so it was significant, and we would always continue to look at those. Any energy that we can save today will keep costs down in the future, and it is important to conserve energy in ways that are sustainable in our community. However, I-937 is not a solution that will allow us to continue to move forward as a community. House Bill 2124 and Senate Bill 5964 will help provide the necessary changes that will keep us moving forward as a community. The City of Kennewick and the City Council fully support and want to work in partnership with the PUD, and I will be recommending that we adopt a resolution in support of these two bills as well as we continue to work on our legislative priorities. These will be included as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Marie. And Steve Taylor, City of Connel.
Thank you very much, Commissioners, for putting on this joint hearing with these two important bills, House Bill 2124 and 5964. Here on behalf of the mayor and the city council from Connel, I wanted to inform you that the city council voted at the August 15 meeting to support language in both of these bills and join this effort to help keep electricity costs competitive for our region. The two bills will help our very rural area of Franklin County stay competitive by protecting our rates. Franklin PUD has, their management has kept these rates stable for a good period of time. We know that cost increases are coming in the future, and we appreciate the management of those costs to help delay that as long as possible. You very well know that the County Ridge Correctional Facility, including the recent expansion of 2,048 beds, that's in our backyard, as well as Conagra Lamb Weston Potato Processing Plant, those are two of the biggest energy users in Franklin County. They and the City of Connel have taken advantage of the successful conservation programs that Franklin PUD offers. That helps offset the load growth and reduces the need for generating additional resources. Requiring the purchase of renewables when they're not needed discourages the incremental conservation, which is the lowest-cost resource and one that's good for the environment. Franklin PUD, as I've mentioned, has an active energy conservation program, and it's been promoting conservation since 1981. They believe, as does the City of Connel, that conservation is king. They work with our local businesses, our residents, and agricultural industry by offering financial incentives and recommendations for energy-efficient improvements. The city recently has taken advantage of the program by upgrading our light fixtures in several of our public buildings. We've also worked with them in the rebate program and installing variable frequency drives for our city wells. Electricity is, as a utility provider for water and sewer service, the electricity costs are one of our highest variable costs, and we keep an eye on it very closely. We have had to institute several rate increases for our financially distressed community in order to keep our utilities financially solvent, and so increasing energy costs to operate those utilities are going to be felt by our largest industrial users in the city itself and obviously our low-income residents that have a very hard time making ends meet. So we must remain competitive. Buying power that we don't need is a message that needs to be sent to the legislature this session, and I think that message is sent very clearly with these two bills. Connel's future industrial growth, for which we are preparing, we're working actively on preparing a site that we believe has a significant potential for a new industrial user. In order to attract that industrial growth and to grow our economy, we have to have competitive power rates. This bill goes a long way to keeping those rates competitive. Thank you for having this meeting and thank you for your time.